It's good, sometimes it's bad. You spread your stuff out too far. Nope. All right, so we're going to start with Jen Francis.
All right, so I am Jen Francis. I'm a mother of a pre-K student here at MES. She will be in pre-K another year. By then, she will be the president of the pre-K. But I just wanted to extend tomorrow is the last day for ESY. For those of you, it's extended school year. And as a parent, we just wanted to say thank you. There's administrators, teachers, parents, therapists, and bus drivers. We know how important summers are, and we just wanted to say thank you. I know we would love to have it all summer, but we are grateful for the five weeks. And it was one of our best, yeah. So, thank you.
All right, hello, everybody. My name is Kevin Oost. I'm a parent of three kids here in the district. I'm also the treasurer of the Music Boosters. I am here to correct some misinformation and to answer accusations from Anna Briscoe from the last meeting. So, I came here to speak in the board in December about pressure that some parent volunteers feel, especially when attacked by other parents and other board members as they try to volunteer. And unfortunately, I am back before you again to say that I continue to be disappointed in seeing board members and other parents attacking parents, volunteers, and not to mention attacking other board members. Public attacks without ever reaching out to sit down and talk continues to be the norm and needs to stop, please. That said, I just want to correct the misstatements and address each issue. Number one, money is missing. There is no basis to suggest money is missing. Even though I am not required to, since we are a parent organization responsible for our own financial documentation, would love to hear where this misinformation came from. Number two, boosters should be audited for a two-year period. First of all, I just want to say that this is a parent organization separate from the school, and the board has no ability to make such a demand. That aside, when I was first put in the treasurer role, I asked the boosters board to audit the seven-year period, but that was shot down and it failed. I also was told by the school administration, which has no business knowing or keeping the financial information of a parent organization to start with, that the Music Boosters was audited annually. After reviewing all the documents that were given to me, there are no records to support that claim. I would save, it would save the Music Boosters a bunch of money if someone on the board or that knows anything about this would just bring that information to me, and I would audit from that point forward, and they would already have the information and would save the Music Boosters a ton of money. I'm okay with getting an audit. Number three, the ledger or balance is never shared. This is just wrong. I present financial statements at every meeting, and those are noted in the minutes. Number four, the boosters hasn't funded anything. This again is just wrong. We helped fund Hamilton, $2,000 donation, Ms. Snyder's field trip, 918 bucks. We're holding $1,200 for her to ask for more money for the next trip, you know, and multiple scholarships and $6,000 for kids, eighth graders, $3,000, Linkaway Central graduates, $1,000. Okay, last 20 minutes, 20 seconds. I just want to close with a few thoughts. First, there are a couple of board members that attend the Music Boosters meeting, and when the accusations were made last meeting, Samantha Tony and Lisa Zlinski did not make any attempt to correct the record. Why? Second, I ask, if you are mad at me, it's okay to be mad at me. Just let me correct it, okay? Talk to me.
Time's up.
Okay.
Finished.
Just can I give the email for the Music Boosters? We have a general email. Music Boosters general email that all the officers can see is moquina159musicboosters3@gmail.com with any concerns or suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, we're going to see if I can do both. It's been a hot minute since we've looked at our school improvement plans from last year. It was great to look at this again just today and kind of go over all the great progress that we made last year. Our first goal at MES, our work really went around implementing our new EL reading curriculum and supporting the teachers in that process as well as looking at students' writing. So, our goal, the first goal that we had was during dedicated weekly team meetings and monthly school improvement time, we would work collaboratively with guidance and supportive administrators and the instructional coaches to learn the curriculum and understand it. And then we used a Likert scale survey for the teachers to complete, to complete their, to give us their feedback. The action steps we had included, you know, team meetings one a week that the coach had attended and led discussions, reflection and planning. We had all of our early dismissal days were dedicated to discussion, reflection and planning. And then we look at that team feedback from the survey as a BLT and looked for areas that needed further support. This is a hard slide to see. Sorry. But overall, when you look up at the top left, our four questions were, I can effectively plan a lesson. We ended in a really great spot. Teachers felt strongly that they were in a good place to plan effective lessons. They could also use data to know where their students were instructionally. They felt confident in that. The teachers really grew at the beginning of the year. They weren't feeling really confident with using the new curriculum, which is to be understood. It was a brand-new curriculum, but they really grew in their ease and comfort and the usability of the resource. So, easily navigating materials, still, it's a, it's a, it's a very comprehensive curriculum, and so some of the materials were difficult to navigate, but they did a great job. They just did a wonderful job. Second goal is a little bit more in-depth. This one has focused on writing. We are increasing our writing proficiency using rubrics under the right, under the unit assessment, writing rubrics, and looking at our report card data. We wanted to look at multiple data points. Our action steps, we met most of them. Well, we met half of them, and then half of them are ongoing because this is a long-term goal. We'll be working on this over the next couple of years. The team identified one formal writing assessments would occur. They would review rubrics ahead of the unit so that they knew what they would be teaching and what this would be required of the students. So, we had an end goal in mind. They organized their data and interpreted it. The things that are still ongoing, the action steps, are continuing to use rubrics to guide student feedback so students knew where their strengths were and what areas they needed to continue to improve and using data and sharing that school-wide and discussed at staff meetings. That would be the next step. We'll be doing that next year. And then use student data and feedback from teams to reflect and evaluate the formal writing assessment process. And our teachers did a great job with that. We had some sample of our, samples of our writing with our kindergarteners and our third graders. So, on the left, that is a kindergartner, but koalas eat leaves. That's good content. It's a complete sentence. You see the capital at the K at the beginning of the word, at the beginning of the sentence and the period at the end. Students are able to use dictation, pictures and writing to share a fact. And so, they did a great job with that. And then we have on the right Freaky Frogs, which is third grade. They had student information booklets, and so they would share it with other grade levels, younger grade levels, which was so fun. Kids had such a good time doing that. We, our writing rubric categories included knowledge and understanding, organization and purpose, and evidence and elaboration. And when we looked at our kindergarten standards, our kindergarten standards, they scored very well on. They were able to use dictation, drawings or written expression to be able to express And then looking at those three categories, organization and purpose, are they able to, in kindergarten, we're really looking at, can they organize their thoughts? That's, we have to start there before they can put their thoughts down on paper. And then knowledge and understanding, we're really looking at that content. And then evidence and elaboration, it's being able to go back even in kindergarten and cite where they learned, where in their materials that they learned those facts. Moving on to first grade, we looked at their, right, their, sorry. We looked at their standards, where students ended the year with their standards. You can see with their modules. So, if this is, if in first grade, that module assessed that standard. So, some modules assessed more than one standard, some modules just assessed one standard. So, the takeaway is that our students were progressing and demonstrating progress in mastering those standards. Again, with the three areas of focus for the rubrics, you can see where our students really progressed through those rubrics throughout the modules and improved their writing processes. Same thing with second grade. Three is met the standard. Second grade writing rubrics, again, you can see how students progressed through the standards there. And going on to third grade, the same thing. Third graders, we remember, they're the ones that are coming in expecting, the resource expects our students to have been through kindergarten, first and second grade, and that ours hadn't, and are, they ended the year really strong. Super, super proud of them. So, our next steps, we will meet in early August to review last year's IAR data and our five essentials data. We will determine which parts of the school improvement plan will continue to be implemented, what, and what that will look like. And the BLT will identify additional action steps that will support the continuation of the two goals or determine if new goals should be developed. So, overall, we're really pleased with how the year went, and we look forward to just continued improvement and seeing that evidenced in our students' writing.
Thank you. Mr. Mcatee.
Thank you, Mrs. Charlie. So, both of our goals, we had two goals, both of them had to do with writing, writing in math and as well as in ELA. Our first goal had all to do, all about CER structure. We borrowed it from the junior high, lots of collaboration, which I'll get into in just a minute, but, you know, trying to give the students that structure to help them develop the thinking cells, to help them develop, you know, all of those habits to create, to respond to, to a question. So, our first goal, you know, write using the CER structure. We'll collect data, we'll compile the data, we'll talk about it, we'll look at student exemplars. Our teachers will be looking at all the different data, which I kind of just went through all of our action steps. You know, professional learning, this was a big one for us. We knew the junior high had success with CER, so we wanted to capitalize on that. So, our math team met with the sixth-grade math team in August to, you know, to see, how do we start? You know, how do we get going with this? We also met with them again in January, about halfway through the year, to make sure we're still on the right track. We had a few questions. We hit a little blip in the road with some of our data, so we wanted to bounce some ideas off the junior high, and both sessions were, you know, very good opportunities for that collaboration. Our prompts, our writing prompts came from Eureka, so it was within the content, you know, instruct the students on the CER structure. Our students not necessarily wrote daily, but they had those conversations daily. You know, what is your claim? You know, what is your evidence? Tell me how you're, tell me how you're thinking this out. So, we used the vocabulary. We used, you know, all of the structure, just not necessarily writing it out on a daily basis. The students co-constructed examples. They gave, the teachers gave feedback, students also gave feedback to each other. The teachers' collaborativity evaluated the work. So, each teacher brought a few samples, they went through it together, make sure they're all scoring it at the same level. And then again, compile, collect, analyze grade level data, which we did. We have quarterly on here, but we did it more frequently than that. We did all of it. However, this is our first year with it. So, all of these things that I just mentioned, we will be continuing with. We might be tightening things up, we might be doing a little bit more rigor with it, but all of these things will be continuing on. Just a couple visuals. We, as I said, we did meet with the junior high. The rubric on the left, that's what all of our teachers use. The poster on the right is actually came from the junior high. So, all of the junior high classrooms have it, all of our math classrooms have it as well. So, it's something they're going to see fourth through eighth grade, so it's going to be everywhere. They're going to get the terminology, the structure, you know, it's just their language as of this point. So, this is how we did. So, we have fall, winter and spring. We have our three data points. Reasoning was the one we really wanted to focus on, which is the far right-hand side, and you can see we made progress. You know, this is fourth grade. The first one was challenging, but then we started working on it, you know, that explicit instruction, and you can see things progressed throughout the year. We did have a little bit of blip. If you look at that middle section, the middle three, the reasoning or the, you know, we dropped a little bit in there, but you know what? We're okay. We had a little bit more of a challenging problem for the kids to work on for that second data collection. And after talking with the junior high, you know, we need to make sure that when we are giving these students these prompts, we're not giving them too challenging of a problem. We want to see their reasoning, we want to see their thinking on information that they know and that they understand. So, when you give them too challenging a problem, it's going to affect all of this. And then our fourth, our fifth grade data as well. Again, reasoning is, you know, is the lowest one, so that's something that we'll continue to work on. But you can see we're making progress. You know, everything is on the right track. When we put it all together, you know, our end of the, you know, our last one, everything's on the way up. So, our math teachers did a fabulous job, but this just isn't math. This is also all of our teachers. Our PE teachers talked about CER, Claim Evidence Response, or reasoning. Our teacher, you know, Mrs. Dabulhop, Vicki Nider and music. So, this is vocabulary that's being used across the building. So, this is not just a math goal, this is a building-wide goal. Next steps, continue the writing opportunities embedded within the instruction, continue to collaboratively evaluate the samples to continually, to continue to provide the opportunities for feedback. The vertical articulation was great. Our fourth and fifth grade teachers meet at least once a month to talk about writing and to co-evaluate the writing pieces. You know, we'll probably hit up the junior high again this year to, you know, make sure we're still on the right track with everything. So, they're in year four, three right now. So, so, you know, again, getting ideas from them is only going to benefit everybody. One thing that's, that's kind of interesting, EL education have, they have group norms. When there's discussions and conversations, they have a set of norms that they're all abiding to and with. So, our math teachers are incorporating some of those norms into math conversations. So, they're, you know, the lines of content areas now are really blurring. You know, is it EL education? Is it math? Who knows? We're all working together. So, you know, it's just a wonderful way to, to build that understanding across the building. And then, as Mrs. Charlie mentioned, our building leadership teams are going to meet in August, and we'll start developing those plans for next year. Our second goal had to do with writing and EL education. You know, the first year with a, with a curriculum, it is challenging. It's hard. The, it's rigorous for the students, it's rigorous for the teachers, but I think we did a great job. Basically, this goal is, kind of goes along the same lines as math. You know, we're collecting data points, we're analyzing the data as a team, we're co-evaluating them to make sure that inner-rater reliability is there. So, it's along the same lines as what I mentioned with math. These are our action steps, the professional learning, using EL education. It teaches the writing process. It goes through the steps. So, you know, every student is getting the exact same writing education. Grade levels are identifying those writing opportunities. The goal was to get one data point, one writing piece for each of the three genres. Didn't quite work out that way, but actually it was a good thing. So, I'll explain that in a second. But we tried to hit up all the three different writing genres, co-constructed pieces, providing feedback from peers, from teachers, so lots of feedback out there for the kiddos, and again, collect and evaluate the data, make sure we're all looking at the same way, and then keep this going throughout the year. We did all of it. We need to continue to do it. This was just year one, so we will have these same action steps. Again, we'll beef it up for next year or make it more rigorous, but, you know, it, all of these things will continue for next year. The writing rubric categories, same that Mrs. Charlie just mentioned, the one addition that we have, we have conventions at the bottom. Our fifth grade started getting the conventions as part of the rubric conventions, grammar, spelling, punctuation, that's also on there. So, I'm just going to go through. These are our different data points. So, these first couple are fourth grade. We did pretty well. You know, it was a three-point rubric, so we're in the 90s and upper 80s for our first writing piece. That's just informative. Second writing piece was a narrative, again, 80s and 90s, which we'll take. Now, this is where we ran into a hiccup. The, it is, the curriculum is challenging, getting through it was challenging. So, our fourth grade ran into an issue with trying to get that third genre in there. So, we kind of ran out of time. So, instead of doing that opinion piece, we did another narrative piece as our third data point, which actually turned out to be good because then we can compare the two narrative pieces. So, you can see on the data that for that second narrative piece, we got better. You know, the teachers looked at the data, they figured out what we needed to do, and the students improved their performance as well. So, even though we didn't get to the third piece, it ended up being a positive. And here's for our fifth grade, same thing, a narrative piece, 80s and 90s for the three categories, informative, 80s and 90s for the three categories. This is where the fifth grade decided to increase the rigor. So, they went from their three-point rubric to a four-point rubric. So, instead of the maximum, the highest score being a three, they had their maximum score being a four, which meant they're expecting more from the students. So, this was their shot at that. So, we have, in addition to having conventions put on there, the students were expected to do more, and the students responded. You can see the scores are all the way up there. They're pretty good. This is kind of putting it all together. It's challenging to compare data points because you have different genres of writing. We can look at those categories, and that will give us some information. What'll be interesting is coming up this year, when we do those same writing pieces, we can compare it from year to year to see how we're doing. But this just kind of goes through, so those first three, you know, the first writing point, a data point and so forth. So, it just shows how our fourth grade did throughout the year. We did pretty well. You know, clearly by looking at this, you know, the reading connection, reading comprehension, they got it. They've got that down. The organization of purpose is still mid-80s, but that's probably your low point. So, that's the one we want to hit a little bit harder next year. And here, fifth grade as well. You know, good scores, 80s and 90s across the board. Now, those are all great, but this next part, where the rubber hits the rope. So, looking at how our kiddos did, this is the fourth grade IAR scores. So, thank you, Mrs. Charlie. Our kiddos came in, this is for fourth grade, 41% last year, went up to 51% this past spring. So, made that 10-point jump, which is huge. 10 points is a big leap. So, fourth grade did an awesome job. Teachers did a great job, students did a great job. This is for our fifth grade, again, 38, 39, and then 46 this past spring. So, wonderful job across the board by teachers, wonderful job across the board by the students. So, thank you, Mrs. Charlie. You're welcome. So, just our next step, steps with our EL writing, you know, we want to get more rigorous with the rubric. We want to, the students have been exposed to this for a year now, so we want to, we expect more from them. The writing instruction is going to be driven by what we did this past year, so we'll keep an eye on that. We'll bring this data up as we move through the year. And again, our BLTs will come up with our new SIT plan coming up in August. You know, with that, I'm going to pass over.
All right, so you guys probably kind of get tired of me talking about CER, but our first goal is CER, and this was the end of year three. I, some of this is similar to what you saw before. I just edit it each year. So, we've continued with our writing goal for the third year, and it was our full implementation year. As we knew back in 2021, our data came back in 2122, and we were looking, and we were really struggling in the area of writing, so we developed this program. Year one was learning, exploration. Year two was experimenting and developing what we wanted to do. And this last year three was really our full implementation. We had, we had increased our rigor from our first year. We learned in that second year that we, we needed to expect more from our students. So, we started the year with the end-of-the-year expectations. So, the beginning data was a little lower than, than, it looked lower, but we knew that that was actually pretty good, and you'll see how it progressed throughout the year. So, I just said most of that. You know, we just really determined that we wanted to make sure that, that we hit the right marks for our kids to start with, and that gave us the goal and the understanding of where to go next. Like what Mr. Mcatee just said, these were our action steps. Some of them are checked off, some of them will go on, and they will continue to go on. One of the things that we've already decided as a BLT is that CER will not go away. It just becomes part of the culture and what we do at Moquina Junior High School. So, we're going to, we'll continue doing the exact same things. We might change, collect our data a little bit differently next year, but we still are going to be doing CER. It's just part of what we do, and it's building now upon what the elementary school is doing, what the, we're just building more blocks on top of what the elementary school, the intermediate school, and now what we're doing at the junior high. So, here's our data. This is our sixth-grade data. What you want in those pie charts is to see a lot of green. Like what Mr. Mcatee said, reasoning is the hardest part of this, is we're pretty strict on reasoning. So, our expectation is that our kids need to be, orange is approaching and green is they've mastered it. So, we don't want to see red. We want red to keep shrinking, which you can see that throughout the semester or throughout the year, that's what happened in sixth grade. Seventh grade, you can see again, there's almost no problem with claim. We, we're crushing the claim. Evidence is pretty solid. I mean, there's a little bit of some concern with evidence, and reasoning is still coming along. That's the hardest concept of the three for, for students to get. And remember, it gets harder every year. So, what they're expecting at the elementary school, intermediate, and us, even throughout the year, it gets more and more difficult of what we expect the children to be able to do. Here's eighth grade, again. Now, I will say the eighth grade added in, they have to have multiple claims, multiple evidence and multiple reasoning. So, theirs is the hardest rubric of all. So, when you look at these rubrics, and you go, well, look, that reasoning is, is not as good as the others, that's pretty darn good for what our expectations are. So, we were pretty happy with that. We're still, we're not complacent, we're still going to be working on it, but know that each year, that those things, it's not just one CER. The kids will even say, is this a C-E-R-E-R or is this a C-E-E-R, whatever? So, they get that figured out, that it's, it's going to be a little bit more complicated. And like Mr. Mcatee said, here's where the results come. So, this is, to me, I think this is the evidence of a school improvement plan that started three years ago, and we stuck with it for three years, and we, we fully implemented with fidelity. So, you can see, and I know those of you at graduation, you got to hear Dr. Cohen mention this, that eighth-grade group, if you look at the pink in the center, they had the lowest score in ELA that we've ever recorded, and they also had the highest score that we've ever recorded. And that's because of, in those three years, we went through CER with them. The other two grades did fantastic, too. You can see sixth grade gained 29 points. We got them at 47. Thank you, Mr. Mcatee. We got them at 47, went to 76. Sixth grade went from 61 to, 61 to 71, gain of 10 points. It gets harder when you get higher to, to get more and more of those points. And you can see eighth grade in the year, in the one year, went from 59 to 82, a jump of 23 points. Those are pretty incredible scores. There are people who would There are people who would kill for these. So it's a testament to our staff. It's a testament to our students. And if you, it's just if you get a good plan and you stick with it, and you make the adjustments as needed, like we heard about with fifth grade over here, in the elementary school, their adjustments. If you make those adjustments, and they go in the right direction, and you use your data, then you get results like this. So now, we're hoping to push those kids up into the nineties. So that's our, that's our goal with this. So we may be, when we get to our next steps, I'll talk about that a little more. We had a second goal. Based on our five essential survey, we show we declined in several cultural areas around the school, supportive school environment, collaborative practices, school commitment, attendance, participation in extracurricular activities, and students reported feeling disconnected from one another. So we reimagined our tier-one behavior team into the positive impact team, and we call it the PIT crew. And they devised all kinds of activities throughout the school year, and these are just some of them. Faculty nights at basketball games, including all of the faculty in the entire district where we gave out prizes. We had a pink-out night with Barbie. You probably saw some of those pictures online. Everything was pink. They even had a photo booth that I, I believe I saw Dr. Cohen try to squeeze into that thing. We had pack-the-place nights where we just loaded the gym. We had tons of kids there, wearing their green and supporting our teams. We've had several fun assemblies, spirit weeks, and activities for the kids to try to get them just more motivated to be good meteors, and grade-level team-building activities. Social committee on a staff level has had monthly incentives, prizes, and more events this year. And so that resulted in, we had zero out-of-school suspensions this last year. That's never happened, as long as I've been a principal. I've never had zero. We had in schools, but none out of school, and that's not a challenge if kids are watching. All right? Yeah, all that, no, those, I have three kids out here. No, you three, do not, do not, don't think about that. Okay. We had way increased attendance at home games with students and staff, and it's just so nice when a staff member shows up to an event to see, see the students, our home games especially. We had some successful seasons, and we had teams who went on to see it, regionals and sectional games. We had staff who showed up there as well. Students in our surveys reported a better connection with the school. They felt much more connected as a school, and attendance, staff attendance at after-school and events increased as well. We actually had decided to have a third goal this year. We just couldn't stop ourselves. So we started a goal, we, I've told you before about studying metacognition. We read a book. We did a book study of teaching students to drive their brains, because we believe that that metacognition, thinking about thinking, thinking about what you're doing is a very important part. It connected with our CER initiatives, and we hope that it's going to connect with some of our, our other initiatives as we move forward. So we did a book study where everybody in the building, all the staff, took a chapter and taught the rest of the staff about it, and we did lessons that went out to the students during their advisory classes. So these were the topics of each one, and you can see who, who each team did the presentations. It was a really exciting thing for all of us to do, and it's best, you know, it's great when everybody's doing it, and teachers are teaching teachers how to do things. So our goal number three will roll into our school. We're doing some executive functioning, functioning things next year, planning and annotating text. That's what we think we're going to be doing with our goals. BLT will be deciding that soon, and we believe the metacognition will fall right into that. So again, well, this is actually, do you want to say this one? So our next steps will be that we'll be analyzing our five essentials data more closely. I know all three building leadership teams are meeting in August to begin planning for next year, and then our BLT meetings as a district, we'll be meeting as a district to talk about those things. So we, I think one of the things we've all learned is the coordination between the three schools. It just creates more synergy, and we just keep going. I know a lot of that's, you know, Dr. Johnson's direction as well. So hopefully, we'll be presenting to those presentations in the September board meeting of what our school improvement plans for next year are going to be.
All right.
Thank you.
I think that's all.
All right. Well, as you noted, Dr. Roland, when you succeed like that, the bar gets raised, and so it'll be very interesting what you guys come up with for this upcoming school year.
Okay. Information reports.
Are we going to have an opportunity?
Well, I didn't see any questions to Dr. Johnson, so I didn't know if there were. Do you have questions?
Yes. Just a quick thing. Mrs. Chorley, when I was looking at your report on the data, just real quick, can you just refresh my memory? I'm trying to scroll through to the page here. Like on the charts, where you're showing the kindergarten standards under goal two, and then you go through each organization and purpose now.
What is that? What is the bottom one? Oh, I'm sorry. That is the, it's the report card reporting system. So it's how the students performed, how many students reported or demonstrated their skill levels at one, two, or three. So, you know, on the report card, it's, three is met.
The grade.
Yes.
The grade.
Got it. Yes. Got it. Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you for asking.
To you, I hadn't noticed this, but
I think the presentation that we're looking at, there's some pages that, to review up here.
The IAR data specifically, I know, was one of the things towards the end, some pages that were up on the screen just now that are not in what the board received. So, you know.
Get those out.
Yeah, yeah. I think there was
The IAR data.
That might have been me. I may have shared it a little too quickly if you provided some updates with our most recent data.
I just added it in today.
Kelly, remind me tomorrow. Maybe you can reshare that. I'll just ask me and I get it down. Okay. And, um, Dr. Roland, I just, you know, I, well
First of all, thank you, all three of you. I think you did a fine job.
And I, um, and these, you know, these updates and progress being made, that's, that's great. Dr. Roland, I really appreciate these, this review, the goal on the climate survey. I, I think it's important for us to look at that and, you know, identify
Try to
capitalize on some opportunities to improve. And the PIT crew, this is a great idea.
I love to
and, you know, obviously there, there was some change being, yeah, from that. So
That's it. Thank you.
I had a question. But before I do that, I'm curious. You had mentioned to Kelly before she spoke that since she didn't have any written questions, is that a new cadence that we're going to try and do if we don't have written questions prior to the discussion that we're not, that you're not going to ask if we have questions after a presentation?
No. I just, we usually give questions to the admin team ahead of time, so they have time to respond. So
Sure.
Having not seen any, because Kristen gave out all the questions and responses, made a bad assumption, I guess, but no one submitted questions ahead of time.
Right.
So no one had any questions, I moved on. But if you guys got questions, then go ahead and ask them.
Yeah.
But usually, our protocol is courtesy to give them, you know, we give our questions at least on Monday, so they have time to prepare. Now, Kelly's question, I get it. If they're missing pages, then that, that's, that's
Well, and some clear
That's recently, so that would be that.
There should always be
It's just what we've done. So again, ask, you can ask. I'm not saying you can't. It just, no one asked questions beforehand, so I wasn't aware of any questions. But if you have questions, then please ask away.
Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, they can answer them. If you can't, then feel free to
That's, that's fine. And none of this is, is meant to be, other than, as I'm watching the presentation, you get additional information when you're watching and listening. So my apologies for asking questions and not asking them beforehand. But thank you very much for the presentations. I thought they were, they were very helpful. I do like to try and acknowledge those when, when we're all together. So last year, I had mentioned with the rubrics, the timing, the timed events for the kids and how that kind of presents some anxiety. I didn't see within the rubrics that timed events are common occurrences. Is that something that is lessened now with the rubrics, that we don't like time the kids' reading and, and as much of those timed events? So it was one of those questions that I had asked about last year, and I was just, because the scores have really improved a lot, and the timing element of things and the pushing for things to be done on a quicker pace, I just didn't know if that was something that was addressed in this round.
We don't have timed assessments. The IAR, I mean, some of those bigger ones are, but the ones like our data collection pieces, they're not timed. So we give the students the, whatever space, whatever time they need. We want to know what they, we want to be able to analyze what they know, and we don't want them to be pressured to get it done any quicker. So our timed elements are gone.
Right. And I think that what you're asking about is fluency, which, reading fluency, so like rate, proximity, making sure that we're not making errors, students aren't making errors when they read. And this, our school improvement plans were focused around the writing process, and it's reading comprehension and knowledge building and vocabulary, demonstrating that through the writing process. So it would not be necessarily reflected specifically in what you see here, but as students become more fluent readers, you're going to see that reflective in their writing process.
I appreciate that.
Because they're going to understand things more quickly, more, they're going to have deeper understanding because they're able to read and kind of consume that information. So
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
I would say whether the students know it or not, at the junior highs, they're being timed, because we need them to be able to write to a amount of time. You know, they've got to be able, we're working toward that IAR style testing, PSAT style testing, SAT style, ACT style testing. So it's kind of in the background, but they're being timed at the junior high.
Moving on then to Dr. Johnson's interim superintendent report.
For this evening, I provided kind of two updates for the board regarding some things that we are working through right now, and then things to look forward to at the start of August. I did provide a staffing update at the time we had the staffing information, my report was due, but I believe Mrs. Martin will share some updates to that because all of these had to do with her department, so I will not steal her thunder unless I share where she is in her hiring timeline. As you probably saw this evening, there are some additional hires that we were asking for your approval for since we first released the package to you. In addition, I did then provide just a little synopsis and summary for you regarding those beginning-of-the-year meetings, that we have many, many different people coming in so we can get a good kickoff to the school year. We have a substitute teacher orientation planned for that first week of August. Kim Dupan, which is going to be sending out the invite to that. Our plan is tomorrow to see who will be coming, and then also to confirm who is interested in returning as a substitute for next school year. We will have our annual crisis and safety plan review with the fire department and the police department. We have, I know our principals mentioned this, but we have our administrative data retreat coming up at the beginning of August. That gives us a chance to take a deep dive into our data, whether that be our IAR data, our school improvement plan data, our five essentials data, so that they feel prepared for the next day when we have our building leadership teams coming in together to look at that data and then start to craft their school improvement plans for the following school year. So lots to look forward to with a busy couple weeks, but a lot to look forward to as we get the year up and running. It'll be here before we know it.
Okay. Any further questions for Dr. Johnson?
I did have submitted a question about the safety plan review. Thank you for the response that it was more in Kelly's questions, that, but I had verbally discussed the safety plan. And the, the direction, and I agree, is to, because I find this to be an extremely important part of what, what we do as far as keeping our kids safe, that I had requested to be part of, just observe the meeting. This was something I had requested last year as well. Our rules allow for the board or its designee, which would be you, Dr. Johnson, or Mr. Stein. Yeah, Mr. Stein. So it's, it's for observation. We're able to, to do that, and I wanted to let the board know that I would like to attend this meeting for that observation role, and especially since we have a report that flows from this review that our names will be on. So as part of what I need to help make sure that I'm doing my job well, I would like to attend the meeting to observe. Thank you.
Any further questions for Dr.
I can just kind of let you give some background, too, and I can't speak to previous practices. I was not in this position, though, will I be in August? But to kind of speak to really what is required out of that, if this does bring you some reassurance, as part of that, we are to provide you with a report of what came out of that. So if you are not present there, our administrative team, as well as our fire and police chief, my full faith in, will do what needs to be accomplished through our school safety act that we're required to follow, and as part of that last, last step, provide you with a report of what came out of that meeting. So I would hope that that would provide you reassurance that we are following through with what we do as part of that meeting. If that, you know, works for you as well, we would want to make sure, and I'll talk with Mr. Stein about that as well, that that comes to you as a result of the meeting. And if you have any further questions, or you feel like there are pieces of our safety plan that still, from your perspective, are not safe, we would be able to read that.
Thank you for the additional information. Given some of the issues that we unfortunately faced last year, and, you know, I do trust the folks around this table. I do trust our police and fire departments. This, to me, doesn't have anything to do with a lack of trust. It's, I would like to, to go and understand at a better level what the report says. So I, it doesn't, to me, and I am stating this, so I hope you take it and, and trust that I'm being honest when I say it is not to second-guess anyone. It is not a lack of trust. It is something that I feel I would help me ensure that we are doing everything that we can to protect the safety of our kids, which is my priority.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Johnson in the interim superintendent?
Well, I don't think we addressed, is, I want to make sure that I am able to go and that this doesn't become an issue when the day of the meeting comes up that, that I won't be allowed to attend.
Well, I certainly don't want to speak for Mr. Stein, who's going to be running the meeting. He has not started yet, so I don't want to put words in his mouth and commit him to certain things. It's his meeting, so I don't know. I mean
I mean, from my perspective, Mr. Stein, I have always believed that you can attend. You know, so if that is a meeting that you would like to attend, you may attend, but I would just ask that the board has a discussion, so we don't have three people show up and then we're in violation of the OMA, or, you know, like, that that's coordinated amongst each other, so that it doesn't become a meeting in which three board members are present.
That, this That, this, in an observational role, there wouldn't be a violation of OMA. We can take this discussion offline. I, I just want to be clear that I'm not trying to overstep anybody's authority. I would just like go, like to go to observe. So, thank you.
Just, yeah, I mean, as, as everybody at this table, if you've read the, the questions and the submittals, I requested, you know, I, I will be attending that safety meeting in an observational role. You know, that's it. Just observe. And I agree, you know, there's no violation of OMA except if we're doing business, right? But, we're not doing that. So, I don't think it's a deal and I don't think Steve Stein, I suspect that he won't have an issue with it. Dr. Johnson, for professional development for next year, I just thought about this, so I'm sorry. Is there going to be any professional development scheduled before the school year starts, or does that happen after the institute, you know, for institute days?
You know, we historically not had professional development before the start of this school year. If there was a need, I can see, but typically our teachers have the summers to recharge and refresh. The only, I would call professional development that takes prior to the actual start of the school year would be our new staff orientation, which we did before. And then, our first two institute days technically are before the start of school, the 19th and 20th. So, there is some professional development that happens.
That, okay, so that's what I'm thinking of. That's what I'm thinking of, is those institute days. So, what is the timing of, will, will the board get information on the professional development on the institute days before the next board meeting?
Um, yes, because it will be before.
Before, okay. Got it.
So, if I'm remembering correctly, and it could be not, but.
I think it's a week.
I believe in the past, I have shared the agenda.
Right.
For those two days that were, was shared. And it is not all professional development. You know, I want to be very clear with that as well. There's, and most of that comes from a place of collaboration within our teachers, which I consider professional development. And when they're meeting together to plan for the year, looking at their upcoming unit, it's not probably the traditional professional development that you would think, where we have like a speaker coming and sharing things out. That typically happens more at our early relief days or farther in the year.
This is what I was remembering that happened last year, that we were invited to. And, and, and so I was just, yeah, I just kind of was thinking, okay, should we talk about that now? Did we miss it? Or is it forthcoming? The only other thing I want to say about the safety thing is, you know, and, and you've already acknowledged, one of the meetings that I listened to, in clo, you know, the closed session recordings, the board had, had, had discussed having the teachers and the unions involved in the safety meeting. So, but you've already said that you would, you would reach out to them and that.
... the confirmation from, as I mentioned in the answer, one of the departments. I did receive that this afternoon, but I have not had time, but Heather will be getting phone calls, you know, to talk about that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Johnson?
Okay. So then for my assistant superintendent report, I did provide an update for us, or I provided you the 24-25 assessment calendar, so that you could see what we kind of, we have scheduled for the year in terms of the district-wide assessment that we give each year. That's also available on our district website. I did provide for you, it's a little bit of information regarding my proposed next steps with the advanced learner, information with our strategical 1C, and the proposal to have Northwestern Center for Talent Development, our representative that we've been working with throughout the spring, come out and provide an overview of the report. That overview would include their process, so we have a clear understanding of what that process looked like from start to finish. She would provide information regarding the standards that are utilized, which we would consider to be those best practices in the field for meeting the needs of advanced learners, because those are what we use to kind of evaluate where current offerings lie. She would also provide for us the findings and general data that came out of our numerous things that we had accomplished, as well as their recommendations based on the findings as they relate to those standards. So, she has a very thorough process and she felt, you know, and I agreed, really working through the understanding of what that process looked like, what the standards were, so that as you get into that particular report, which I would give to you at that time, is the recommendation, so that she can walk us through how to read the report, where to find certain things, so that you have the most information and the best information and the tool you need to best interpret at the time, what is being presented to the district in terms of their, their recommendations and next steps. I would also then propose that I would have an opportunity to share with you based on my analysis of the report, my work that I've been doing with our consultants throughout this month, what I would like to see those next steps look like, so we can move forward in doing. And, and so I would follow that presentation with some information regarding, regarding that. So, I did put that proposal on there for you. That also gives me an opportunity to meet with Dr. Stein, Mr. Stein, when he starts on August 1st, to review that, because he's going to be a really important part of helping move this forward in this upcoming school year. I did let the board know that, thank you to your approval with our e-learning plan. I was able to submit that to the regional office of education. They did approve that. So, we are good to go for the next three years. And I just gave a congratulations to two of our teachers, Mary Essery and Nastrian Altegridi. They completed their ELL, or bilingual programs, through the Elevating Educators Bilingual Grant that we received through the state of Illinois. So, it was great that we were able to help through the state's funding, support these two teachers in either completing or obtaining some certification. So, kudos to them. I appreciate their willingness as our ELL population continues to grow, that we're increasing our staff who are equipped to best. And that's what I have.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson and Assistant Superintendent? I have instructions.
Dr. Johnson, does the assessment calendar go on our website now?
Yes, I did mention that. Yeah. So, it is required to be on the website.
Okay. Oh, I'm reading it now. Okay. Got it.
Right now.
Okay.
Yes, that's posted as well. Yep. Yep. I did update everything once we got the approval.
Okay. Next up, Director of Student Services, Mrs. Mott.
Thank you so much, everyone. I've had such a warm welcome. Returning back to Mokina, I like to call it home. So, it has been a wonderful transition. I've had the opportunity already to meet with a lot of families, staff, administrations, and even community members as I rebuild those relationships under a different last name. So, it's been a wonderful process. I've also had the opportunity to work with Jen Volpe. As I transitioned into this role, she's done some really amazing work for this district. So, really focusing in on what the next couple of years look like, what are our biggest areas of focus, and what are some of the really great strengths that we're already doing. We'll have a more comprehensive plan in the next couple of months regarding what her services will look like moving forward, because I know we have some mentoring opportunities and some professional development opportunities that she potentially would be supporting us with. In addition to that, Dr. Johnson alluded to staffing update. We currently have six open positions according to this document, my board report. That being said, you'll note a BCBA, which is a board-certified behavioral analyst. A lot of districts in the area are hiring these individuals to help support behaviors and moving from a lower reactive approach to a proactive approach when it comes to supporting students who have any sort of challenging behaviors, or even students that have some of those internalizing behaviors. So, you will note a individual we are proposing to the board today. I think she's going to be a wonderful addition if approved. Additionally, you'll see the special education teacher. We had an opening and we have an additional proposal for the board today. I had the opportunity to join the interviews and we had a really fantastic interview with this individual. So, I am hoping we move forward with that. We had some professional, paraprofessional interviews also. We have a few more next week. Those positions are open here at MES. We are fully staffed at this given moment in regards to paraprofessionals in the other two buildings. And then, we have a few interviews that have occurred for the speech and language pathologist position. That being said, we continue to check references and aren't quite to a candidate quite yet to propose, but we hopefully will have one by August. Summer evaluations, so this special education department never sleeps, I like to say. We are always evaluating, making for sure we are following IDEA guidelines and special education timelines. So, we had seven evaluations at the end of the year. We needed to make for sure we completed in the summer months. And then, I did note two play-based evaluations that were unforeseen for a total of nine evaluations over the summer. So, we have had staff even today coming in to do play-based evaluations, again, making for sure we're in legal compliance with special education timelines. The last noted section here is extended school year. If I ever use an acronym, also, if, if you are unaware, special ed has a ton of acronyms. So, if I say ESY and you're like, what is ESY? Please feel free to interrupt me. I'd love to explain that. So, ESY, as Jen spoke of today, is done by our Lincoln Way Special Recreation 843. It currently is at Grand Prairie Elementary in Frankford, Illinois. This is the second year in a row, I believe, if not more, that it has been at that location. We have approximately 60 students that are enrolled in that. I've received some really good feedback about ESY this year, but some areas of growth that our team has already begun having conversations with families and also the administration at 843 to make for sure our communication with them is successful and also making for sure students get what they need in order to be successful. I do want to note, I'm sure there may be a couple of questions regarding the autism classroom. I have not put that in my report this week, or, excuse me, this month, because my focus has been on hiring and making for sure we have people ready to go. In my, I believe I'm on day 11 in the district. So, that has been my main focus, but you can expect a more comprehensive report regarding that, that classroom in August. I'm meeting with staff and students already to, or, excuse me, not students, staff and administration to make for sure as we begin opening up that classroom, that we have the appropriate supports in place and evidence-based practices occur day one. Any questions for me?
Hi.
Yeah.
I don't have questions. I just want to say, welcome. And, you know, I, I know that as we talked briefly before the meeting, you're drinking from a fire hose right now and you're, you're smiling and you're meeting with parents and, and I just really appreciate it. And if you ever need anything, please reach out.
Thank you so much.
Hi. I wanted to meet with you before the meeting, but, but that didn't happen. So, hopefully, we can talk at some point soon. Welcome. And thank you for answering my questions. And I, I, yeah, I picture the fire hose analogy with the, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of that autism classroom update, because that's something I regret not asking and that, and I appreciate that. You know, that might be something too, because I was just checking the timing. I'm sorry, I should know this, but, you know, I think our me, our board meeting next month might be like the week before school. And, you know, ideally, you know, that autism classroom is a point of, of concern, let's say. I, I won't speak for the whole board, but, you know, it has been brought up. So, potentially maybe keeping the board updated between now and then too, is, is always an option. And we would welcome that. I think, I would welcome that. I don't want to speak for everybody, but that's it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Dr. Shaw?
Good evening. Very light for me this month. One action item on the agenda that I'm asking for you to table until next month. Just the seal coating of the parking lots. I was waiting for Mr. Andreessen to ask me if I had my three quotes, which I do not. So, we're gonna, gonna table it. So. Well, that was always one of your questions. Did you get three quotes? Well, I didn't. So. Yeah. And so, we're still waiting on a couple quotes, so I'm gonna request that we table that until next month, until I have all the data that will just make for a best practice. Okay. So, a light month for me. That was the only action item I had. But, I do have some updates. We've got, we did, had a lot of projects. Last month, we did approve the transportation health insurance. Kim, our HR director, met with all the bus drivers. We had one additional driver enroll. One. And then, some of our, we had our working cash bonds settle on July 9th. So, that money's been received by the district. Our purchaser was the Brenham Township School Treasurer, and we will pay that back on August 8th. So, we'll have that bond for about 30 days. We'll transfer into the transportation fund and pay for those two buses this year. At MJ, the bathroom partitions, two and a half of the bathrooms are done. It's moving right along. The front door replacement at MES, as you can see, it's not quite finished. We're waiting on that glass. Expected it on July 31st. Once we have the glass in the glaciers, we'll finish that project and finish the doors with the systems from ITR, the door swipes and the alarms. The window film installation, there's one window left. They ran out of clock. They gotta finish one window and then all of those windows will be done. The athletic containers are done. The flooring projects, we did get a completion schedule from the vendor. During our walkthrough today, Dave Rana was part of that walkthrough. We are gonna finish the MIS library. The demo and the carpet will go in. We will postpone the MIS bathrooms. We don't believe that according to their timeline, we have full confidence that they'll get done by the school year. So, that's been removed from the contract. They can hold the price till next summer or we will rebid next summer. Painting projects are all complete. The electrical projects, there's one heater in the kitchen that we've still got a little work on. Other than that, all the electrical work is done. The ceiling grids will be started next week. All of the equipment is here and that's being done in-house. The parking lots, light poles, those are almost done. There are still some cones around one. But, those, those poles were just like, I can't believe how bad they looked. When, you know, it's very sunny in the summer and you see the parking lot lights. And, so those were painted. They've got a lift and Robert got up there and painted and they look great. The ceiling fan at the MIS gym is scheduled to be done tomorrow. And then, we've got our MES, MIS parking lot expansion, hard surface play area. There was a walkthrough scheduled with the architect, the Evans and Sons today. I think there was a conversation with Evans and Sons on the phone. They did not show up for the walkthrough with the architect. We do have our schedule, their schedule that's on here, does have them on, on schedule for completion. It has, we've had some serious rain, so they've, they've paused because of the weather, saying that it's kind of muddy to move, move, do some earth moving. We have had a conversation with them that our top priority is Willow Crest Road. We really need that road rebuilt when school starts for the buses to go through. Parking lot, second, and then that hard surface play area, third. So, that's the priority that we've decided with Evans and Sons as we look toward getting that done. I've also put a budget in front of everybody. And so, it's in a different form instead of the ISB form. Instead of the ISB form, which is, it's, it's kind of, it's a little more difficult to follow on the ISB form. This is the Skyward form. So, you see something like this every month in your financial report. So, I printed it in the Skyward, which is what we work in. It's what you see on your monthly reports. And it has a lot more detail than the ISB. ISB is a snapshot in time of a summary of everything. This gets a little more granular. Not only does it get a little more granular, what I added were three col, three columns on the end that gives you the last three years of history. Not the last three years of budgeted history, but the actual, the, the year-to-date activity. So, it's the, it's, it's not a budget to budget, but it's an activity. So, it gives you some perspective. It gives you a little bit of that common sense look. What does this number look like last year and the year before and the year before? Does that make sense? So, you also have that bit of perspective with it. And when you, when you take a look. And when you, when you take a look through it, I can guarantee you 100% it's gonna change from today to next month. I have budget meetings scheduled with everybody, about everybody in here, in the next two weeks. And so it will change. This is the first draft. The part that, you know, I feel pretty good about is the revenue part, which is, you know, just the first seven pages. The other 70 pages are all the expenses. There's a small summary for you in a cover sheet. So kind of where our money comes from and where it goes. It's not gonna change a whole lot because it, there, where our money comes from, it comes from our local base. And we're very fortunate to have a very supportive community for our tax base. Our expenses aren't really gonna change, those percentages very much either. And then the summary at the bottom. So when you take a look at the summary at the bottom, the grid, with the unaudited starting fund balances, that's where we're at right now. We're in the middle of our audits, so our auditors have been here on site this week. The revenues, the expenses, the over-under and the ending fund balance. So the goal is to be in the green on the fund balance, which is between 33 and 65%. So how it looks right now, our ed funds in the green, O and M's in the green. The referendum money is always gonna be in the red because we never want that to be, right, we want to spend what we get. Bond and interest is gonna be a little high for a while because it was always based on our payment on MJ. And when that ended, this just dropped significantly. And then transportation, we knew that was gonna be in the red for a little bit until we start and build fund balance from buying buses. IMR F is in the red. And then our working cash, the ones on the bottom are gonna always, they're gonna be high because our working cash is like the district's emergency fund. But what we're gonna work on specifically is the over-under in the ed fund. We need to do a little cleanup there. We got 169 under on O and M. We're gonna need to do a little cleanup there. The referendum money, you can see on the far left, the ending fund balance was a million. We want that to be zero. So we want our over-under to be a million. So I've got a couple of things probably double booked in O and M that I need to clean up. So that deficit is gonna end up being a million because that's what we want for our fund balance to be zero. So those are the three areas that are gonna change. Everything else probably stays pretty similar. Anyway, so take a look at it. I gave a little explanation on the back of this document on how to read the Skyward report. I just thought the Skyward report would give you a lot more detail and be much, much easier to follow than the ISB state budget form, which that's what you'll see next month because that's what we report ISB. Yeah. And I'd be welcome to sit with anybody to go through that in the next few weeks too.
Jay Urban, the conference.
We did, we did. Oh, sure. So we presented on, this conference was for emerging school business officials. So it are people who are in their first role as a school business official. And so our presentation was really about what to expect from transportation in your first 90 days. Like, this is what you need to know when school starts. Yeah, you need to make sure you've got buses and bus drivers and what kind of routing software that you want to use. You want to start and keep track of your miles. So you also have a transportation report that's due on August 15th, which is everything that was done last year. So we talked about those things that you're gonna need to know in your school business official realm as, in regards to transportation. So Mr. Walker pretty much spoke about, you know, from the transportation director's perspective. And then I was there from the CSBO perspective. And then our third presenter was David Engelbrecht, who is the superintendent in Marengo, from the superintendent perspective. So the three of us shared out to our audience those first 90 days as a brand-new school business official from transportation perspective. Yeah, it was really good. It's the second year that we've done the same presentation, the same three people. And so the second time through, it was just even better. You know, I'm moderating and it's one minute left and it's like, okay, and we're on the last slide. So we've done it down pretty good. Yeah, thank you for asking.
On that note, do you want to share the good news about the annual conference?
Oh, sure. And so I wrote for another conference as far as what we do that's a little unique in Mokina, and that is our Fund 21, our Fund 21 report, our capital plan and the school board policy that the board put in place. So it is about how board governance dictates our capital plan. And so we got approved to present. So we will be presenting at the school board conference. And so we, myself, our E S G, customer service, Jeff Cohen, and Mr. Bush from the board. And I believe, I don't know if you've talked to Mrs. Valenci or not, but the four of us will be presenting on board governance and the capital plan. Yeah, thank you. It is Saturday afternoon at 2:30. Yeah, thank you.
Stuff happening here. Good stuff. Okay.
I, just two quick, real quick things. I always want to say thank you for your willingness to sit down and walk through the budget. It's always very helpful. I always take you up on it, so I appreciate your time. The other thing is, I had asked a question, and I don't know if this is better directed to you or the rest of the board. I had asked the question last month and other times previous about changing the calendar, the finance committee calendar, back to the monthly meetings. And I had asked it, but it wasn't addressed. And again, I don't know if that's something that should be, it's in your report, but I don't know if that's something that you're expected to address. But I would like to know if we will be, if anybody is considering my request to move back to the way that it was just prior to when three new board members came on board. So I hadn't heard a response to that, so I thought since it was on the report that I could ask.
We can add that as a conversation at the next finance committee meeting. That's one option that I could do. The other part of it is, you know, how the board directs me. I can put it as a conversation on the next finance committee meeting or I'll take whatever direction you want to give me.
The finance committee discusses the schedule.
I have a couple of things for Dr. Shaw, please. So just looking at this budget, Dr. Shaw, this is, I just really appreciate this. This is extremely helpful. I, I think you've done a fine job of laying out what, you know, will help the board go through and compare. And the format certainly is easy. And the timing, I just appreciate because I know that you have, this is not normal and you're hearing us and you're responding, and I am grateful for that. I do want to take you up on sitting down and going through it line by line. I already have some questions for two minutes. So thank you. And thank you for your updated seal coating. You said that, you know, we're gonna, you're recommending that we table this. That makes sense if we haven't gotten three bids. At some point, you know, I had submitted this to you. It's not a rush, but I would like the board to be updated on the Metra. You know, it's kind of outstanding thing from Dr. Cohen. And just so everybody knows, we have a contract with Metra leasing out the parking lot that is, I believe, expiring, not this year, next year. Oh, I thought it was 2025. Okay, so do we get, so. Okay. So, but the caveat here is that that contract says they are responsible for the maintenance and repair of that lot. And it is in disrepair and, you know, so that's kind of the, and we're doing some of that work on our own lot, so it would make sense. And maybe tabling it would be that enough time to explore those, you know, conversations. I had sent a follow-up email. We could talk about it offline, but. Just wanted to circle back. There was something from last month. Was it the storage unit? There was something that we were gonna go to the collective, to the cooperative.
It's in my board report.
Oh, sorry.
It is, it's in my board report. It's on information items for action next month still. The architects are still working with the collective, the cooperative, and the contractor to put a package together. They still feel that their parameters were pretty good from a couple of months ago, where we had low end and high end, but they wanted to get a tighter number.
Got it.
So it was also something that we could do in the fall that doesn't have an impact on any of the traffic patterns or.
Right, because it's removed. Sorry, if you can give me a second, I just wanted to make sure that was my only, my only questions. I think so. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw.
So.
Our people are there, they're using it. It's practically our nine tenths of, you know, we want to go from a possession. Big plan anyway.
Well, we've been in contact with Metra.
Okay, great.
Been very cooperative with me. I've been in contact with them. Dr. Cohen handed me the numbers and called. There's also, there's, what we're learning, because we're still learning a little bit about it, is that there's another agreement between Metra and the village. And so when I reached out to Metra and said we'd like to terminate the contract early so we can take possession, and he said, well, that's different information than what I got from the village. I'll get back to you. And then I reached back out to him and said, do you have any updates? And they said, yeah, we'll go ahead with the early termination. We just have a little cleanup that we have to do with the village. So there's another intergovernmental agreement, or not intergovernmental, but between Metra and the village that also is in regards to the parking lot. So as we're learning a little more about it, we're just gonna give it some time for all three. It's not just us and Metra. It's us, Metra, Metra and the village. So we'll just make sure everybody's on the same page. And today, we're not, we're probably close, but we're getting there. Yep.
Really quick, Dr. Shaw, I just want to make sure that the board's comfortable with the budget timing that you presented. So at the August. We might, you know, I just want to, do you have any thoughts on, you just.
Yep.
So just want the board.
The board meeting date is Wednesday. It'll come, you'll have it Friday before the board meeting. You will. This is the first draft. Change. It will change. When I, when I, when you take a look at this grid, the three line items that I said we're gonna change, the biggest one is the O and M referendum. Fund 21's gonna change. I think I've got a couple of things duplicated in there. It's gonna go down by a million dollars. So the ed and the operations and maintenance, they're still a little not balanced. So they're gonna get closer.
All right, okay. So that's my question. So we're gonna get it in the formal board packet per se.
You will.
But really, the deep dive is gonna be at the finance committee meeting. Is really that, that's when it's gonna get dove into and really questions are answered. So I just want to make sure that the, and then at the September regular board meeting, we'll have the hearing and we can do all that stuff. But that timing of it, so this just.
It's a rough draft. Yeah, it's a rough draft.
It's gonna change and I appreciate you putting. I want to make sure that the board's aware of it.
Can I respond to that? So. I'm not a proponent of that kind of timeline. You know, it makes me nervous to get something four days before, especially, you know, to this gravity before a vote. And, and the budget is really important. So what alternatives are there to get us more time so that it's not a four-day thing?
Well, it's gonna be, you're gonna get it on Thursday or Friday, whichever day the package's released for the following Wednesday. So five or six days. And then it's a tentative at that point. When you see it in August, tentative. And so it's subject to change, so you have that entire month. You've got first draft, come and see me. I'll show you what the first draft looks like, second draft, it's fine. And then from August to September, it typically doesn't change. So you've got that entire month. And you don't vote on the actual budgets until September. So August, you're just voting on a tentative form. September's when you actually vote on the budget. So right now, you have 60 days. You have today until next month with a first draft, which, like I said, will change, but you can see me. Then you've got another 30 days from the tentative form to the final form.
Is this the timeframe, the same timeframe in other school districts? This is how it works everywhere? They're getting the amended budget. Days before they're voting on it.
I would say they get it in that board pass for that.
This is like a standard thing. And what, what is the, what is the, it's just, it's just part of the process. There's no significance per se in the amended, I'm sorry, the tentative budget. Is there a significance to that?
It is. So in August, we'll have, you'll see the screen, you'll see a presentation with, you know, these graphs. You'll see that. And so you have 30 days. You post it on your website, here it is in tentative form. The board all receives it in tentative form. Those are mandated 30 days for you to reflect on it, for you as a community member to formulate your questions, to be able to come in September for any kind of questions or comments that you may have on that budget. So the state is giving you 30 days from tentative to final. So it's a mandate, 30 days for everybody. And the amended budget follows the same process as the original budget. You have to have those 30 days. That's why we had to have that special meeting because we had an earlier board meeting that didn't give us full 30 days.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I'm trying, just, and like I said, you know, it's, just, I haven't met with everybody to find to, but it's.
Thank you.
Okay. Director of Technology, Mr. Henson.
All right, good evening. I just had three items on my agenda for this evening. The first one was we renewed our contract with Proven. We really liked them. We really liked how prompt they are when we put in the service call. I don't think we've ever had an issue of running out of any sort of tournor. And with that renewal came replacement of the copiers. So we replaced all 15 copiers at no additional cost. They are the same model, just a newer version. So they're better, they're better, you know. All rounds, I guess you could say. We also updated the paper cut software. That's the software that manages how you print. It was a couple of versions behind. Proven took care of all that. They took care of all the updates for us. We knocked that all out in one day, so that is done and complete. The next item was laptops, teacher laptops. They are ready. Please come and get them. Make sure you see the tech department, if anyone's watch out there before you leave. Don't just grab it and leave. You do have to log in first and a tech has to do a couple of minor things. You do have to log in first and a tech has to do a couple of minor things and then send you underway. Chromebooks are all cleaned as well, power washed, ready to go. I think they're separating them into where they, the classrooms they need to go in now is the the final step. So they're, they're almost done with those. And then a quick update on the network refresh. Urbancom will be out here on Monday. Hopefully, finally swap out all the access points and the network hardware. And from there, it would just be network hardening and making it more secure for, for everyone. So that is all I had on my agenda this evening. Any questions?
Further questions for Mr. Henson?
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on, Ms. Briscoe with Lincoln Way Area Special Education.
Good evening. Items to note on the financial side, looking at budget actual, as we get closer to the end of the year, the co-op is overall pretty much on track. Picking out refunds, Mr. Englett would expect that at minimum 92%, which is 11 months out of 12, of budget would be spent by this time. The number should actually be a little higher since you have several big ticket items that are paid once during the year, such as insurance, bus leases, purchases and capital outlay. As of 5/31/24, the co-op's funds are at the following percent spent of budget. The ed fund is 91%. Mr. Englett would expect the final 6/30/24 results to be slightly under budget, but not too far off from the beginning of the year projection overall. O and M fund is at 83%. This fund will likely end under budget unless a lot of construction expenses were to hit in June. The main factors contributing to it being under budgeted are utility, utility costs and capital outlay. Maintenance services are actually over budgeted. Transportation is at 101%. This fund will end over budget due to higher than budgeted vehicle lease and purchase expenses. Removing the beginning of the year bus lease payments, bus purchases and insurance from both the budget and actual sides of the equation means the transportation operations portion of the budget is at 96% of the total budget as of the end of 5/31/24. We typically spend a little less than normal in the transportation fund in June, so I'd project that the operations portion of the transportation fund will be slightly over budget, but not a lot. This appears mostly in the driver salary line item. But overall, things look good from a budget actual standpoint, with the exception of the transportation. However, transportation billings are more than planned and budgeted, though there should still be refunds going to member districts on this fund. On action items, we approved all of our administration contracts. And the Englett group was approved. And the seller increases for support staff. The bus driver pay increase was approved, bus monitors. Operation and maintenance agreements are McKay Center. We approved the Lincoln Way Area Special Education Association. We approved Lincoln Way Area Support Personnel Organization. There's a few more you guys can read. There's, you know, I don't want to, there's 25 approvals. It's in the board book. You can read the rest. I just wanted to point out the most important ones. Most significant, I should say. I think that will be it. Oh, I wanted to thank Megan. Thank you for coming back here. I know your work ethic and your dedication to our children, and I am very excited to have you back. You're welcome.
Questions from Mrs. Briscoe? Sure, Megan, you wish you had a dollar for every time you heard, welcome back. You'd probably be, you know. Million Dollar Beach House somewhere. Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts? Or Starbucks? Okay. All right. Oh, easy. Okay. Approve all the minutes?
Go ahead.
I believe.
I move to approve minutes from the June 12, 2024 regular session in closed session meetings, the June 10, 2024, and June 17, 2024 special session in closed session meetings. And the June 24, 2024 special session meeting as presented.
Second by Ms. Briscoe, any discussion? Just to clarify that there were corrections to the June 10 meeting, and those have been presented. So in this motion that those revised minutes are covered. Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oats?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up, Dr. Shaw was stuck with me with the bills. July is a very interesting month to get, to get the bills, you know, as a school district, you know, having a July through June 30 fiscal year. Everybody loads us up with expenses, all of our technology providers in the month of July. So we have lots of technology expenses in there, Skyward and everything on down to everything that we use in the kids' world and the teachers' world and stuff like that. So it's good to see that. Something to note, we are a cash basis, so we do, we don't use accrual based accounting here. So in my world, in the business world, we'd probably set up a prepaid expense and amortize that over the life of the contract. But here at the school district, we expense it all in July. So looks like.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oats?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is personnel. Second by Mr. Andreessen, any discussion on that? Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oats?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Congratulations and welcome to all the new teachers that just got approved. The next one up is the seal coding. I motion to table the ME.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oats?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. Next up is the approval of music fees.
I move to approve the fees for music programs for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second by Ms. Briscoe, any discussion?
I just want to, I'm going to vote no on this, and I just want to give an explanation. At this time, I don't feel the district really has, I think there's work to be done on getting our arms around the financial impact of our band programs on our budget. And Dr. Shaw is working on that now and, and Dr. Johnson as well. We had a conversation on that, was it yesterday or the day before? Anyhow, so that's in process and I, and I'm sure Mr. Stein will have some of that unfortunately to, on his plate as well in August, starting in August. So at this time, I just am not comfortable passing on fees to parents that we don't have our arms around the financial cost of.
I also want to note, I appreciate Dr. Johnson meeting and discussing the fees. I appreciate you putting those, working to put the fees together. I also will be voting no on this. I think that there is definitely room to partner with the boosters on this to help defray some of the additional costs that are being passed on to parents. And I, I know that as a booster parent, that is something that, that was discussed. And I hope that in the future that we can work cooperatively to, to defray some of these costs. But again, thank you for keeping this ball moving and I support the music department. I just want to get the fee structure correct in this. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments? Okay. Please call the vote.
Mrs. Oats?
No.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll have a couple of things. We think we'll have MIS MES seal coding. We think we'll have the MJ storage shed and we will have a budget, a budget presentation. And we will be asking the board to issue an RFP for the MES MIS fire panels.
Excellent. Go Wildcats? Maybe, I don't know.
I would like to add to the agenda to, to discuss the, the community involvement that we had on for a couple of meetings previously. So how we can do that, especially with the start of the school year right around the corner, it'd be great to, to inform them of some back to school and other opportunities to, for community engagement.
Okay. That's follow up for related discussion, action items.
There, there will be a presentation, right, Dr. Johnson on the, for next board meeting?
Yeah, Eric, I mentioned the Northwestern.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
That's what I think, yeah.
Didn't hear that. Okay.
Eric, you had mentioned the, for me to raise the issue of the policy committee, so I forwarded the memo on that about the dates, utilizing the same dates, but just shifting everything out to, to restart with the August meeting. So I was curious on the feedback and if that's something that we can publish if everyone agrees with how that's laid out. Obviously, I have on there with the caveat subject to, to change on the forward meetings, but if we could at least kick it off again, that would be fantastic. And I also attached the template that we'll be using to, to review, review that. So we have documentation on the review process.
That was August 12 at 7:00 PM, correct? Okay.
Absolutely. That could be part of the board book, I think would be fine. And then in, in the calendar was my intention to put at least the August date in the calendar. And then I think going forward, I think after each meeting, then we can publish the next one. That might be the better course in case we need to push. Yes, please.
Julie, I think, I think we need to get all of them on the consistent with the Board of Education, the, the Finance Committee meeting. They're all scheduled for the whole year. So for consistency, we just need to put it on, you know, for the whole year.
I'm fine with that, too. What, what, what does everyone else think?
Thank you, China. I think we can't do all of these dates because we got the dates we agreed to. We did not agree monthly. I think it would be safer if we put just the August 12 for now. And at that meeting, we agree the dates we proposed and after.
I think, I think the conflict we have right now with the September meeting is the same night as the Finance Committee meeting, and the Finance Committee meeting is about the budget. So that I don't think is going to work. So I think what might be best is to go with August 8, get it out there, and then revisit that, if that's going to be a no or not, because I, if you look duly looking at, that's finance as well. Think it's a policy and then we change.
That's fine.
Look at the.
Great.
Happen to stuff, so.
So happy to update. And we did agree that we were going to have dates for each month and we were going to discuss and if we needed to not meet in person so folks could gather and, and submit issues. We did agree that we were going to try and do that at least for this first, this initial run through. And then we were going to, going to develop a calendar for subsequent calendar year or school years, excuse me. But that said, I think just getting, getting the next date out there would be fantastic. I have yet to receive feedback yet on section two, so if you could get that to me by the end of the month, I would really appreciate that.
So I just want to clarify, I'm hearing August 12, 2024, put on the website.
Yes, please. Thank you, Kristin.
I have a couple more things. Can we, can we add to the agenda next month? Maybe this is a closed session topic, I don't know, but we need to start conversations about the superintendent search starting in the fall. So I think that should be potentially on the August agenda to get the, by rolling on that, understand what our timeframe is. If I remember correctly, I think that typically the hiring during the fall would happen as an action item in November-ish. So if you kind of backtrack from that, if that's our goal, December, November, then, you know, anyway, we need to start that conversation. And. Lost my other thing. That's it. Thank you.
Email us and. Okay, next up, talk about Policy Committee. Kina?
I wanted to share that, you know, we had some pretty bad storms the other day. And I know I had to, to help some folks with downed trees and, and damaged property and everything. And while we don't want to see any of that happen, it was just the community and everyone coming together and helping. So I just applaud the, the community for being there for each other.
Anything on the firecracker dance that you want to highlight? Another successful event?
Ladies and gentlemen, I know we had some thunder and lightning. It was very, very frightening. And then it all cleared up. There were a lot of people out there and we raised a lot of good money. And as we get ready for this fall, if we have families that need a vision. Get the healthy meat. Thank you.
Tonight, I move that the Board of Education adjourned to closed session. Compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of a public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of a public body or against legal counsel for the public body to, in, to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employer of a public body that is subject to local government wage and. And held in accordance with this act and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one. I think we need. Any discussion? Please.
Mrs. Tony? Mr.? Mr. Andreessen? Mrs. Briscoe? Mr. Bush? Mrs. McMillan? Mrs. Oats?